Hello. Welcome to the Bellingham zoning board of appeals meeting for November 5. Before I start the meeting, I just want to welcome our newest member. I'm sorry, I don't even remember your name because I think Jason Berthold. Jason?
Cool.
Thank you. We're happy that you could come. You know, it's kind of crazy circumstances, but. All right, the first item on the agenda is for a special permanent family apartment for seven Beaver Pond. Motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor?
I'm I.
Okay, do you want to read the hearing?
A real quick reading here, so the Bellingham zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on November 5, 2020 at 7 p.m. remotely via the Zoom online option for their request for a special permit section 240 dash 40 for a 702 schedule for a lot area and a variance for section 240 dash 30A. An alteration of a nonconforming structure is suffered by the property of 305 Blackstone Street, Bellingham, Massachusetts, 62 Lot 3. This property is known to agriculture. Applicant and owner, their names P. and N. Furman, 305 Blackstone Street, Bellingham, Massachusetts. Application may be due to town board's office. Then the candidates will go to town business hours or online at the town's website on the going for page. And then wishing to be heard shall attend at the time and place above.
Okay, and who do we have in front of us then by Zoom? Is it Anastasia or is it the property owners?
We have the applicants who attended this evening. Tim, can you hear me?
Yeah. Um, let's see. I know, I don't see anyone for this item here. And I know Laura has followed up with them and they mentioned they would be here. I can speak to the application if you like. Essentially, you know, what it is, the replacement of the family apartment that's there right now. The new family is moving in and they need their, or their in-laws. I know Tim and I have both talked as well as Laura about the stipulations and, you know, they're seeking this while purchasing this house from them. You know, certainly up to the board, we could continue this through another night if you would.
Could we move to the next agenda, the next agenda item and then maybe they'll be on Zoom and see if they're.
Yeah, it certainly, you can postpone any decision from the end of the meeting and open the next hearing and then.
Get another board to, but I would say I'm okay with just waiting and see when they come.
I'm, I'm okay. I'd like to hear from them. I mean, is there a proactive cover of the board before they purchase the property?
Yeah.
So yeah, I'd like to hear from them. I'm okay with that.
So procedurally, Jim, do we just motion, do I just motion to the next item on the agenda?
Would you like to just motion to continue this to the end of the agenda? If that would satisfy.
Okay, motion to continue to the end of the next item on the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
I am.
Okay, we'll move to the next. Item is for variance for a lot area of 305 Blackstone Street. All motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
I.
Jim?
All right, Bellingham zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on November 5, 2020 at 7 p.m. Remotely via the Zoom online option for their request for a variance in section 240 dash 40 for a 702 schedule for a lot area and a variance for section 240 dash 30A. An alteration of a nonconforming structure is suffered by the property of 305 Blackstone Street, Bellingham, Massachusetts, 62 Lot 3. This property is known to agriculture. Applicant and owner, their names P. and N. Furman, 305 Blackstone Street, Bellingham, Massachusetts. Application may be due to town board's office. If you're a little town office hours or the town website, I'm going to locate them, which should be heard, shall attend at the time. And I know we have multiple representatives here for this applicant. I don't know who would like to speak first. Give your, mute yourself.
Hi. My name is Linda Chappie. I live across the street.
You hear me now?
Yes, Linda, if you could, we'll have the applicant speak first and then.
Sure.
Thank you.
Could you just state your name? And your relationship with the.
Yes, yeah. My name is Stephen Kenny. I'm an attorney with offices in Medway, Massachusetts. I'm representing James and Ann Furman of 305 Blackstone Street in Bellingham.
Are you're going to be, are they on this call as well or is it?
Yes, the Furman's are on the call as well. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. As mentioned, we're seeking, I guess, area variances for two lots. We're creating, looking to create a new lot, which would make the presently pre-existing non-conforming lot more non-conforming, thus the alteration of a non-conforming structure, a lot. The, the subject property is in the agricultural zone. The required area is 80,000 square feet and the required frontage is 200 feet. There was a plan that was submitted with the application. I'm hoping that the board members have the plan and can take a look at it. We're looking to create a lot A and a lot B on the plan that was submitted. The petitioner is seeking to divide the lot that's located at 305 Blackstone Street into two lots. 305 Blackstone Street is a large rectangular lot, has 410.61 feet of frontage, has 52,148 square feet of area. But it's a relatively shallow lot in, in relation to its, its length in that it, on one side, it has approximately 163 feet of depth and on the other approximately 132 feet of depth. As mentioned, lot A is where the existing dwelling sits at the moment. It, we're looking to divide the lot into two lots so that we had, lot A would have 28,337 square feet of area, would have a lot shape factor of 19.6 and would have frontage of 210.61 feet. Lot B, which is, would be vacant land at the moment, would be 23,811 square feet. A lot shape factor of 17 and frontage of 200 feet. The grounds for the variances we're seeking and the alteration of a non-conforming lot basically has to do with regards to soil condition, shape, or topography. It's the shape that is the important factor here. It, the shape of this lot is unique in the zoning district in that it has more than adequate frontage with 410 feet of frontage where 200 feet is required. It is a large rectangular parcel, has substantial frontage and minimal depth. It is a pre-existing non-conforming lot as it has been in existence prior to the 80,000 square foot requirement was enacted. This lot, as I mentioned, has 52,148 square feet. The shape of the parcel affects this land, but does not affect other land generally in the zoning district in that it's, it's a different shape, different type of shaped lot than, than other lots in the zoning district. We would submit that the literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning bylaw would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, as the shape of the parcel is such that it is, it has more than adequate frontage for two legally existing parcels, but because of the limited depth, not the required area. The petition is James and Ann Furman wish to create the lot and convey it to their son for the purpose of their son constructing a single-family dwelling in lot B. Their son has just reached, recently graduated from law school and has substantial student debt which would prevent him from purchasing a home anywhere in the near future. I think we can all understand that. We're submitting that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw. As the zoning district is agricultural, it's actually a highly residential area with single-family residences surrounding the subject lot. The intent of the zoning bylaw is certainly to not overbuild or intrude upon a butters. And the proposed grant of variance that we're seeking would allow a single-family structure to be built upon lot B. It would not overduey burden the land nor be overly intrusive to any of the neighbors. The plan for lot B, it's a heavily wooded lot at the moment. The plan would be to keep a buffer zone up between what would be lot B and the Furman's home, which presently stands there as well as the abutter to the, if you're looking at the lot, the abutted to the right. So that there wouldn't be a complete removal of all of the wooded area. The intent is to keep the wooded area as much as possible. I'd be happy to answer any questions of the board that the board may have. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Stephen. Um, so I guess, so Jim, it's, it's own agricultural. Obviously, the minimum is 80,000 square feet, so the pre-existing lot already is non-conforming. It's 52,000, give or take. So I guess the issue, I guess a couple of things, I guess, to me that came to mind is, I guess I would take some issues that for variances, we create a high threshold to meet the criteria to grant a variance, a variance isn't granted lightly. And to me, I guess, I don't know, if I go down the list, I don't know for as far as substantial hardship. I guess one of the questions I would have is for, so they lived here for about 33 years. I appreciate their son has substantial student loan debt. Could they not do something like a family apartment, though, that would give them a means to have a place to stay there? I just don't know if it, to me, falls under the category of substantial hardship. But I would open it up to the rest of the board to see what that stage they have. I also think that they've had the land for this amount of time. To me, it seems, I don't know, you know, you open the door to precedent that other people and then subdivide their land. Land goes to double. We don't really have any guarantees that if we did pass this, the son wouldn't live there. Or if he does, what if he just is there for like a year or two and make a substantial profit? So I guess I would have concerns about if you're opening the door to letting people just. It's already fairly substantially non-conforming. You would just further non-conform to that area in that agricultural zone, but.
By a lot.
By a lot. So I don't know, to me, if it, to me, it seems like, I would think a fair compromise would be, could you explore something like a family apartment, which we grant pretty leniently? It just seems like these are high thresholds you have to meet and I don't know if it meets it under the criteria to me when I look at the literal zoning bylaws. Senator O'Brien or if anyone else, or Ray, have any other thoughts?
I would agree with you, Brian. I don't, I don't think it meets the criteria I've laid out in 240 dash 12 with the threshold that it has to meet to become to allow a variance. Why would I have to agree with you? The other thing I would mention is, as we constantly mention about the size of the lot, the surrounding lots. Most of the surrounding lots are similar to the, to the lot that's already there at the 50,000. If you look across the street, most of the lots are somewhere around 40,000 square feet, which is closer, closer than if you were to subdivide that lot. So it doesn't, I, I'm not sure that they need threshold by, unless someone could definitely get them to meet.
I read this law really this week. We're not, we're not looking at small variance.
Yeah.
3,000 would be, something like 28,000.
Yeah, I think Art makes a good point that about, we have to look at the character. Is it similar in character to the other neighboring properties? So I guess I would open it up to the applicant. Cause I know when I talked to the town buyer, to Jim Cutford, he had suggested similarly about exploring, would you be able to explore something like a family apartment? Is that anything that James and Ann that you've ever looked into or thought about for your son?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. We have thought about a family plot, but we really don't have any place to add it on to our house. And so we were looking at the houses that are behind us on Linda Way. And actually, I believe that the size of the two lots behind us, there's also an easement behind this particular property where nothing will ever be developed. The, the first house on the left on Linda Way, I believe, is even smaller than the proposed lot. So I don't know how we could add something on to our house. We have a well at one corner. We have a septic on the other side. And if you're building an apartment, doesn't it have to be attached?
Yes, yeah, it does have to be attached.
Yeah, and that's, that's our problem. On the left side of the house is where the septic system is. And on the right, in the back, is where our well is. We really don't have a place, I mean, our house is pretty big and there really isn't any place. We're very close. The town took some frontage when they put in Matty Way. They took the frontage from our side of the street. So we're not even that deep. We can barely park two cars in our driveway without hitting our garage door. You know, I think this, the, the width of the sidewalk that was put in when Matty Way was put in was put in over the street and then the frontage was taken from our side. So there really isn't room to add anything to the front of the house. I just don't know where, that probably doesn't show a picture of the house. I don't know if, you know, there's an aerial picture you could look at, but there really isn't any place to add an apartment.
Well, you, I just have, so I imagine where you're saying where your septic is, is where that plus or minus 100 feet to the property line? Is that correct?
The way?
What's that?
That would be, yes, that would be correct. Where you refer.
I mean, that's a fair amount of area to, you know, distance to play with. I'm not sure, I mean, obviously you'd have to get the civil engineering plan to know exactly where the septic is. Then you have a certain setback to where, you know, where the leaching field is and from the actual box where you can locate a structure. But it seems like a reasonable area that you could potentially do in addition. I mean, I guess the feeling from the board is that a variance is certainly a high threshold to reach that. You know, I think this family apartment is worth exploring to at least see if it's possible. Cause I don't know if you've looked into it all.
Well, we, we did, we did take a look into that and as, as Mrs. Furman has, has mentioned, we saw some, some difficulties with that. It's, it, it may be a possibility, but we were looking at, really what we were looking at with regards to the variance was the fact that you've got such a, a, a long, a lot with a great deal of frontage and and not, you know, in conjunction in relation to the rest of the zoning district, not the area that, that, that other lots would have if they had this frontage, which was really the reason that we saw the possibility of a variance being in play. Because, because of the, the 410 feet of frontage and the area being approximately 52,000. So that's what we, that's really what we were looking at with regards to, to the high threshold that a variance requires. We, we see that as being the shape of the lot being such that with that much frontage and with minimal depth of the lot and the area being approximately 52,000, that's where we, that's why we came before the board for a variance. I don't think we'd be before the board if, if, for instance, it was, you know, 200, 200 feet of frontage, because then it's a much different situation. But we, looking at it, we saw the fact that we've got that much frontage with minimal area as, as, as a reason that a variance may be a possibility.
There's four properties across the street from our land, four different homes. And the house on the corner of North Street and Blackstone Street, which would be an abutter to the proposed lot, is actually smaller than our proposed lot.
I think, well, I think as a board of the plane, the issues that we have to deal with is that there's a lot of pre-existing non-conforming lots. So I, I, I don't know exact, I mean, I'm sure you're correct, but just because there are smaller lots that are pre-existing that are too small, doesn't mean you want to further create non-conforming. And in this case, I guess you already have a non-conforming lot. So I think the issue the board and the feeling the board is having is that, do we want to, is the hardship enough that we want to further increase the non-conformity? And I guess to me, it seems like you're kind of saying that, cause I can see with the septic that it makes it difficult, but it doesn't, doesn't sound like it's not possible to do an addition. And that it hasn't really thoroughly been explored for a family apartment.
Well, if you looked at the house, we, we actually have a basketball court on the left side of the house, partially behind. The house would look way too wide. I, I'm not sure, what is it, 42 plus 24? Is that what that room is or 16? I think it would look weird and I know that it can't be built anywhere near the front where the septic is and where the pipes come out of the house to go to the leaching field. I mean, we used to use a wood burning stove and have somebody drive out back and dump the, the, the wood and we would have to be sure to tell them, you know, he had to go a certain way.
And then I just have a question for Jim, actually. So I guess for the, just to go over kind of the details, how many variances would, did you say it would be two variances?
Yeah, so you're considering two variances here, as Mr. Kenny mentioned. The first is you have a non-conforming lot, so you're furthering that non-conformity by reducing it even further. As, as you guys know, agriculture zones, that's 80,000 square foot is what the, the lot requirements are today, today. And so that's the first variant. So kind of shrinking the already smaller lot. And then the second one is creating a lot that doesn't have the sufficient lot area, again, the 80,000 required. And there is likely to do it to construct that 23,811.
Yes, me as. So I guess just to go over the, just to let the applicant know, if you do have the board take a vote, then they can't come before the board for two years, is that right?
Right.
What would that be on the same matter?
Right.
Thinking back to our family apartment, that would be.
That's, that's correct. Yeah, yeah. And, and, but I, before we go there, I know there's at least one member of the public.
Yeah, I definitely would like to hear from any of the, open it to the public, to any neighbors or anyone else who would like to speak on this.
Hi, Joe Chappie.
Oh, can you have your, can you give us your address?
Yeah, I'm 292 Blackstone Street. So I'm directly across from the Furman's and directly across from the UIP. So a couple, so a couple of things I wanted to mention. So yeah, I'm opposed to changing the zoning because literally on the corner, the recently built house, there's a nice big lot there. What's to stop them from punking a host on there as well? And opening a can of worms where many of the other houses in the area, you know, again, if you do it for one, you've got to be willing to do it for others. So that's one opposition. Additionally, the traffic in the area has gotten significantly worse in recent years. We've been here for 28 years, I believe. And initially, when the development for the Dob Blackstone was put into place, additional access road was supposed to be provided, but was never maintained. So basically that doesn't exist. So adding more traffic, more houses to a street that's already, in my mind, beyond what it should be, I, I don't think is a good idea. But for my, now that's, I would say general issues. My personal issues are that this lot is actually significantly elevated over my own. So when it rains, all the water, they came up from Matty Way, comes through that lot, comes across the street into my yard where my septic system is. And I'm probably about 15 feet below where that house would be. So adding an additional property, you're preventing groundwater from being absorbed. Plus you're also diverting around a new building and guess where all that water's going to go? You know, and my, my lot floods every year. When they, when the work was done next door, engineers were brought in and everybody, builders all said, yep, no problem. Well, guess what? It flooded again this year. So, you know, it's great when engineers get involved, but reality is that it's a big issue and I don't want it to be being made any worse. And as far as placement goes, as Ann had mentioned, there's so little frontage from the street to their house that they could barely get a car in there. Where would the parking for the new lot be? And again, that would be right on the street with no trees in front of it, so right in front of my window. So again, opposed, again, that's selfish, I guess, and that personally affects me and I wanted to declare about that. So those are my big issues, but in addition to that, because of the height that they're at, we hear every conversation because they're, that's not that they're loud. All right, it's, we hear every conversation in their backyard all year round, to the point we can't even open our windows. That's just the heights of the lots and the way things are, we've come to get, be used to that. But again, adding more bodies back there, even closer, I think that generates a hardship for us.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Yep.
Joe, where exactly do you live? I'm looking at it on a map.
So I'm directly across the street, I'm 292, the second lot in.
Blackstone Street, okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, is there anyone else in the public that wants to be heard on this? This is Linda. Jim, she.
Linda, would you care to?
I think Elizabeth is trying to get on right now.
Hi, this is Linda Chappie. I, I just.
Can we get your address? Sorry.
292 Blackstone Street.
All right, thanks.
Yep. I, I agree with the board about the lot size. That's a big concern to us, you know, and looking at the plan, it looks like the house would be pretty big. And, you know, the lots are going to be a lot smaller and, you know, as my husband was saying, we have great concerns about the water. And, you know, the, you know, where they're up higher than us, you know, the noise level and stuff, which is, you know, just a personal thing for us. You know, and, you know, I mean, it's just, I, I don't think that it's a great plan. And, you know, what's to prevent other houses in the neighborhood from wanting to divide their lots and have multiple houses added on? I just, you know, that's all I have to say.
No, I know that was one of my concerns as well about, we have to be cognizant about if we're set precedent. And that's why the bylaws have a high.
Could I just make one comment?
Yeah.
First of all, it's not Matty Way behind us, it's Linda Way. And actually, it was a developer that came in. Um, and actually, it was a developer that came in and the planning board approved it. And they put in an access road behind us, but that kind of deteriorated. The access road was put in when Matty Way went in, but the development behind us is elevated above our property. And that is Linda Way, and that was approved um by the planning board, I guess, or whoever does that. Um, it's it's just Jim and I, so I don't even know what noise is going on out by my pool. The past several years, um.
Like I said, yeah, it's nothing, it's not you, it's literally six feet apart, we can hear every word you're saying. It's not that you're being loud, and I've.
And so you can hear the neighbors to your left and right as well.
But literally right at my living room window, and again, not, it's not, it's not offensive, I'm just saying, it's just the angles.
And um.
I have one point. This is Jim Furman, three oh five Blackstone. I just have one point about uh precedent setting. Um, if you look at the lot plans in this area, as far as frontage availability. Uh, none other has enough frontage to minimize it by half and still achieve two hundred feet. So as far as a precedent, that may be written into it.
It would be no precedent for it, because no one else has four hundred feet of frontage.
All right, thank you. Um, is there anyone else then on um, does it recall that? Any other neighbors or butters?
Yeah. I'd like to make a comment, yes. Um, I I would agree with the applicants. There are a lot of lots in that area that would be. Similar in size after they subdivide it, and Jim, I did have a question, which I didn't get a chance to look at, is uh, is Linda Way an overlay? Or is that, does the zone change?
It's a cluster subdivision.
Yeah, okay, so that's why they're undersized lots from the agricultural zone.
Yep.
Um, yeah, I mean, you know, this, unfortunately, it is a residential neighborhood that's in agricultural zone. They are. Developing lots up the street. Um, I don't think those went to ZBA, did they, Jim? The ones that are gonna be developed just uh up Blackstone Street a little bit?
Those are by red, those are two acre lots.
Yeah, so there is more going in there, but, yeah, I mean, the the lots are, this lot would be similar to a lot of them in the neighborhood. That's that's my only comment. Thank you.
All right.
I don't think, sorry, I don't think attorney Kenny might realize it, but I.
Yes, Brian, nice to see you.
So I don't think that doesn't affect my. Um, I don't think there's anybody on the board that would want to grant the move that you're speaking. I think it's commendable that you wanna help your son out and give him this gift of land and help him along your plan. Problem is that we are at the notion of by law. The only thing I take comfort in that helps me making hard decisions is that we're bound by the rule. We have to follow strict, like a ball ball, and it's just not here. I appreciate the argument of Paul presented. Uh, but there is no hardship in the in the sense of this, uh, in the sense of the bylaw. A rectangular shaped lot is not a. Hardship that um that usually comes before the huge lot, all shaped lots that have really neat features. There are, there's really nothing neat about them, so. Uh, again, I think it's commendable what you're trying to do, and I wish that we could help you, but it just doesn't. Uh, reach to the level of really grant. Apparently, you know, one variance would be hard enough to two variance. It's just a sort of a double wing. I would encourage you, like uh, Brian had indicated that. If you give family in law special permits quite limited. If you find them in the network, I'm sure that that would be well.
Okay, do we um, mark those then? Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Could I, could I make one point?
Sure, yeah.
I just a question for uh, Mr. Cutford. Uh, so the the town's position is that. Um, if the town votes on this, we still have the ability to come in with a special permit for the for the family home, correct?
Uh, yeah, certainly. It would be a separate application, a separate request.
Separate request, exactly, yeah. Thank you.
Uh, but as to the chairman's point, you know, if uh, if you uh believe that you. You know, maybe this isn't moving favorably for you, you always are welcome to withdraw without prejudice, and you can certainly think about, you know, your options.
Understood, thank you.
So it would be a separate application.
Okay.
I just might want to add, I just what uh, everybody was saying here, so if they withdrew without prejudice, then there's uh. There's no file, and and uh, you can just, you can start over with anything that you'd like. Uh, even if you wanted to apply again for the uh, for the uh variance. But uh, if 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 in fact that it seems as though it's it's not going to pass, the variance will not pass this evening. Uh, so in light of that, you may want to consider a uh, a withdrawal.
Just wanted to.
May, would it, would the board be uh amenable to uh continuing this hearing? So that I may speak with my clients regarding those possibilities. And then get back to the board uh, either before the next meeting or at the next meeting to discuss more fully.
So I'll make a motion then that we continue the speed, this hearing until uh our next meeting, which is December what?
Third.
Third.
All those in favor? Aye, aye. All right, thanks. We'll see you next month.
Thank you very much for your time.
That is continued to December third. If uh, if there's something in the meantime that you would like to, you know, present to, if it's. You're moving forward or withdraw or what have you, feel free to reach out to me and I'll relay that to the board. Uh, you know, anytime in between now and then.
Okay, thank you very much. Take care.
A little note to the board, I believe I see uh, this Hagerstrom pretending that we wanted to go back to that.
Sure. Yeah, that sounds good.
Um, this uh, this Hagerstrom, are you, are you present?
I am, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Okay, um, so can you just tell us kind of your relationship with the um homeowners and you're the petitioner.
I'm sorry, it was just hard to hear you.
Oh, sorry, no, I was just, I just wanted to get an understanding of your relationship with the property owners.
If I may, Brian, if you just uh, let her, let it be known that you, this meeting has already been opened.
Oh, yeah, um, that we have made the motion open.
So Anna Stater, so uh, so we've we've opened this hearing, you were actually up first, so we've continued this till uh later on. But uh, but now that you're here, we can certainly reopen this this uh, this topic. And I think the chairman's just asking for uh initial information about uh what you're proposing and uh, and your relationship to the uh. The uh, the owners or applicants, I guess, or you're the petitioner, but the property owner is Bruno and Krista.
Sure, so we actually filed um this just prior to us taking ownership of the property. So we just closed on the property on October twenty ninth, so we are now the current owners of Seven Beaver Pond. And we wanted to apply for the family apartment permit um for our in-laws to move into the residence on that side.
Okay, and um, so I guess to give just a little background, Jim, you were saying this already. Had a family apartment approved.
Right, so as I said, so uh, one of the things that you noted is uh, there is an existing family apartment there, right? So you're, you're essentially replacing the existing family apartment with your own.
Correct, yep.
Okay, and there'll be no changes that occur in um configuration of the family apartment? And I think it's not an application.
Yeah, no, no changes whatsoever.
Okay, and um, I guess, could you just give us a background as to who's gonna be living in the main residence? And who will be the names of who's staying in the uh family apartment?
Sure, so my husband and I will be residing in the main um, the main home. And then his parents will be moving into the in-law. Um, their names are Maureen and Stephen Hagerstrom.
Okay, so I guess I had a question just procedurally. Um, I think that's great, what you're doing um is commendable to help. Your parents out, um, so I'm definitely in favor. My question I had, Jim, was administratively, is there, I forget, but in the bylaws, they would say they. It has to be owned for two years to get to grant any kind of.
So uh, historically, how Tim and I have interpreted that as well is that it's been in existence for two years, so it's not a. Such a new build that they're sliding in an apartment, uh, and so, so yes, this one's been around for, you know, some time.
And so, um, Anna Stater, you, in the application, then, did you already close on the house, on the property?
We did, yeah, we closed on October twenty ninth. Um, the realtors, when we were working with them, advised to file in time for the next zoning board meeting, which was the fifth today.
Okay, yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I don't really see any issues with this. Um, I'll open it to the board now for any other questions.
I I have zero issues. Commendable.
And um, if you apply, it's um, for a five-year period, if it's approved. Um, did they come back and through the board, is that correct, Jim, to get?
Right, she'll she'll receive, if the board approves it, she'll receive a notice in about four and a half years saying, hey. Uh, you need to come back and refresh the permit, uh, just to make sure everything is still the same terms as the original.
Okay, and then I guess, um, and I don't, would you ever find the old ruling or anything, Jim? I mean, as far as for your. Uh, for your husband's parents, how many vehicles is it just going to be? One vehicle that they're gonna be using on the property, parking?
It would be two, um, both of them have vehicles.
Okay.
And we have plenty of parking on the property?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
One of the things that we have to uh. That has to be present, some sort of hardship, is that some kind? Could you speak to that?
A hardship for my in-laws, is that what you're mentioning? Yeah, so my my father-in-law was um furloughed originally from his. Position and then was laid off, um, and my mother-in-law um doesn't quite make enough to support the two of them independently. So we were um hoping to kind of ease their financial burden.
Okay, fair enough. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Um, is there anyone in the public then that wants to be heard on this, or?
Is there anybody there in the public wishing to be heard on Seven Beaver Pond? I don't see anyone.
Okay.
Motion to grant the uh request.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. That passes, uh, so Anna Stager has to go to the registry deeds, what's?
Right, so Anna Stager, so uh, either more or I believe that if you uh, with a permit in hand for uh, for the family apartment. Just need to get that recorded, that registered deeds, uh, and then that is good for five years, and like I mentioned before, uh, in five years. Uh, please go back and get it renewed or, you know, if there needs to be change, someone.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, bye-bye.
So the next item on the agenda is continuation for a public hearing for the conference of permit for Lakeview Estates. Um, I'll recuse myself being in a butter again. So not sure.
All right, so um, the board's point of view, um, once the board know, um, town council. That the developer had an appeal, the recommendation of the inspector um to the National Housing Affairs Committee. As such, the board will not be able to discuss this matter while pending. Uh, yeah, I don't need to continue this, yeah, we'll put board members' recommendation to. I know the applicants have asked for six months.
Oh, I'm wondering, I I don't disagree with what you said.
Um, I think anything to do with uh a criminal right thing going on down here, while it's in. Legal proceedings, we shouldn't be discussing it. That's kind of what town council let us do.
I I I, but it should have an opportunity to be heard, and then what we do beyond that. Have an opportunity.
Are you okay with that? Fair and balanced.
Sure, I see uh, Angela and Elizabeth here.
Yes, hi, I didn't hear much of what was just said, sorry.
I can recap real quick, so um, so the the board has uh. Made made statement that they're they're concerned about the uh, the crime legal proceedings, so they won't be able to talk to anything about regarding that. But if you did want to provide any update or anything, there's certain things.
Um, so I was.
Yeah, so, um, I I guess the the uh big thing is that we did uh submit the. Uh, notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, uh, as requested by this board and the Conservation Commission. And DEP and others. They uh sent the information out to the peer reviewer and. Uh, our client has um put eighteen thousand five hundred dollars into escrow. Uh, to um allow the peer reviewer to um. To peer review the the work and um, and make his determinations. Um, and, you know, given that that is underway, we feel as though that is. Um, considerable progress. Um, and we are, would look for uh the continuation, the extension. Uh, and also um, the board to release the hold on the the building permits.
Hey, Elizabeth, um, I'm not quite sure you've heard first part of my statement, um, but while there are proceedings happening. Uh, we cannot discuss that topic. You you filed, you filed a board appeal, and for a town council, it's something you cannot approach.
Oh, okay, I, yeah, I couldn't, it was very difficult to hear.
Anything else?
Um, no.
Uh, I would suggest that that was.
Very nice.
I would agree with Brian, however, more than I'm professional.
Mr. Terrence.
I would agree.
I got a motion.
Second. It's uh, continued to December third.
Yeah? That's you, sir.
So just um, a little minutes, is that all that's left?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
And uh, and also the second item on there, uh, or the last, the third item, if you can return this to me.
And we, the last.
You know, online, but uh. You can hand it back to me.
No, I know there was a comment. No, I know there was a comment on on one of them.
Yeah. I also had a question in second session.
Okay.
You can do it another time.
So I think a motion to accept the unit of the meeting of the October eighth. Second motion.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
So we, we, we have a session. How was that?
We can, we can do that offline and it'll be done. We want that to be worked back. We motion to close. I think so. Much of us?
Much of them all go.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, thanks. Next them. Your smile is empty. Have a good night.